All right, let's do a test and we'll see if it's stuck on my video. It's stuck on. There it is. All right, okay, be ready.
I believe we are up and running.
Let's ask Josh if he can hear us. Uh, Josh, if you can hear me speaking, could you please give me a thumbs up? Uh, Josh Nielsen? On Zoom. Yeah, that is frozen. Or if you can hear me, Josh, maybe unmute and let us know. Or unmute. Yeah, his picture is frozen. Oop, Evan says he's not gonna make it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Josh, are you, Josh Nielsen online? Are you able to to hear me? Anyone else online? Mr. Edwards, can you hear us online?
Yes.
He can?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I see that. Okay. Although we need Josh to, uh, with Josh's presentation, let me text Josh and see if he can hear us. Okay, I guess I'll open the meeting then. All right, it is four oh four P M. On November ninth, I will call to order this special meeting of the Grand County Board of Equalization. Uh, prisoner members, Kevin Walker, Bill Winfield, Mike McCurdy, Mary McGann and myself, Jacques Hadler, as well as Grand County Attorney Stephen Stocks, Grand County Clerk Gabe Waitteck and Grand County Assessor Debbie Swayze. Uh, we also have Associate Commissioner Administrator Quinn Hall. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance. All right, um, Commission Member disclosures, is there anyone here who needs to disclose anything about today's hearings?
I'm sure it's the same for all of us, but I do know people who own condominiums in, uh, Springs. And, um,
Yeah, yeah.
And just other people in the community who are affected by this.
Or who I
But I have not had any ex parte communications with any of them. They've all been very good at honoring my position and not speaking to me.
I I also know people who are on the, um, ballot list. I haven't had any contact since the last meeting. Same thing. Yeah, same. Okay, um, let's, uh, I guess we're on to approval of minutes. Uh, the Board of Equalization has to approve the draft minutes from our May third, twenty twenty two meeting. Is that correct? Okay.
I move to approve the minutes from May third, two thousand and twenty two B O E draft minutes.
A second. Okay, uh, all in favor of approval of minutes, raise your hands. And then pass this unanimously. Um, I now, uh, am moving on to, so we wouldn't, we didn't have a lot of time. We, this is, uh, two days after we voted to table this measure and we've, uh, some of us have gotten together on a, um, an agenda. A lot of us have done our own work as far as, uh, reaching out and trying to, um, educate ourselves as much as possible to these issues. And, uh, one thing, um, uh, my colleague, Commissioner Winfield, reached out to Utah State Property Taxation Division, um, Associate, uh, Director of Property Tax Josh Nielsen from upstate. And Josh kindly agreed to be with us today and give us a rundown of what happens when, um, when, when these things go to the state level, um, which I think is going to be helpful for everybody. So I've invited Josh here today and he is with us on Zoom. Um, I'm hoping Josh can hear us. Are you able to hear us, Josh? Excellent. Um, so if you, if you're ready to speak, uh, I'd much appreciate it. You can unmute and, um, we're all ears. Uh, Josh, we're, we're actually not able to hear you yet.
Any luck now?
Yes, sir. That sounds great.
All right. All right, looks like all my settings on Zoom were messed up. Thank you for being patient with me. Um, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with, um, your counsel and with your taxpayers as well that I assume are in the, in the audience. Um, you guys, uh, several of the council did reach out to me yesterday and wanted to understand the property tax process. Uh, to my understanding at this moment, uh, Grand County has followed the proper procedures, um, in the Board of Equalization process in hiring a hearing officer and giving the taxpayers the opportunity to appeal, um, in a timely fashion. And they did that and the hearing officer, uh, heard each case and provided a recommendation to the board at which you guys are, uh, looking to make a decision. You are looking to make a decision on whether to ratify those decisions that were made by your hearing officer's suggestions. Um, the Board of Equalization does have the final decision on those, and one of the reasons why you hire a hearing officer is, um, the Bo, the Board of Equalization mainly does not have the experience and expertise in appraisal to understand the intricacies and the nuances of, of an appeal and dealing with an appraisal from, you know, one side coming from an assessor or an appraiser and the other one coming from the taxpayer who may have hired an attorney or an appraiser as well. So almost all counties hire a hearing officer to come in and hear those cases and provide a recommendation to the Board of Equalization. So it sounds like that's all been done properly. So at this point, if, if the Board of Equalization decides to approve all of the recommendations made by the hearing officer, at that point, the county auditor, who is the clerk of the Board of Equalization, is required to send out a notification to the taxpayer of that decision in which the taxpayer now has thirty days to appeal to the state. And how that works is you actually go back into the county auditor and file an appeal through their office. Uh, the county auditor should be helpful in helping you file that appeal. And once the paperwork is done, the county auditor submits that through an electronic system that comes up to the state. Uh, obviously, we've been dealing with the whole state. Um, the appeal process can take a few months, at which point the, the appeals department at the Tax Commission will reach out to the taxpayer and let them know of a potential hearing date. And if they want to submit any additional evidence in, before they have their hearing, um, I'm not sure of all and when they decide to do this, but I do know that our commissioners regularly will do rural, rural hearings and they'll come down to the county. I think some of those usually take place in the summer where they'll actually come to the county to hear the case. That way they can, um, alleviate some travel expenses by not only the county but the taxpayers as well. But if the hearing is, happens to be up at the Utah State Tax Commission in Salt Lake City, the, they do offer, uh, Zoom and or Google Meet options so that the taxpayer does not have to travel if they wish not to. Um, when you appeal to the Tax Commission, um, you have the option to hire an attorney or an appraisal, appraiser or somebody who is competent in, um, the field of appraisal, appraisal work. And I would encourage you to do so, um, that if you're gonna go, especially with commercial appeals, if you're going to go in front of the commission and, um, go against a licensed appraiser, that it would be wise for you to have somebody on your side who understands those nuances as well and has provided you comparable properties and information that will back up the value that you seek for your property. Um, our current mission, in my opinion, is very fair. Um, their job is to be, uh, fair and impartial. They work for the taxpayers. That's how I view my job as well, as we work for the whole state. We work for the taxpayers. Our job is to have oversight of the counties and to ensure that they're following proper procedures, codes, standards and practices, because if they don't, then we are not being fair to the taxpayers, which is our, uh, main concern and job. So that's what we do, and I believe that the current commission, uh, there's three attorneys on there as well as a certified general appraisal, appraiser who, uh, has several years of expertise in working with, uh, county in commercial work. So she is very knowledgeable in commercial work and I feel will give a very fair uh, treatment to, um, the process and, um, the taxpayers and the county and will look at the evidence and make a decision based on the evidence that is presented. Is there any other questions or anything else you'd like for me to touch on?
Thank, thank you so much, Josh. Um, yeah, open to questions. Do you have one, Stephen?
Yeah, normally do applicants appear before you with an attorney or is it process or how are they normally? How do they normal come to your office?
I'm not down there all the time, so I guess I can't necessarily give you a definitive answer based on the, what I've heard. Um, you know, a lot of residential, uh, appeals, um, will, you will get people that just come in. I think it would be very, very rare for anybody with a commercial appeal, which is, I think is a lot of your concern down there. Um, I think it would be rare for anybody dealing with a commercial appeal to appear without somebody next to them that is knowledgeable, whether it be an attorney or an appraiser or a real estate agent, somebody that understands the process, understands how to look at comparables. Um, if you've, if the taxpayer feels competent in that and feels competent in, in presenting that information and can understand, um, how adjustments are made. And when dealing with commercial values, looking at income approach and income and expenses and those kind of things, then they're free to represent themselves, but it would be wise for them to have somebody with them that understands those things if you're going up against a certified general appraiser who does understand those things and can present their case because a lot of it's not necessarily whether or not, I mean, this is how the law works here in our country is that you have to be able to prove the evidence, based on the evidence that you have. So if you're unable to do that and the certified appraiser that you're going up against can, then you're not likely to have a very good case because you have to prove and show that proof to the judge and to our commissioners that the value that you seek is proven by that evidence.
And are these hearings conducted in person or virtually? Is there an option for them to appear virtually?
Yeah, they, they did, they did, uh, because of COVID, start offering that. And so I believe, um, that when you, um, are given the option to, um, when they reach out to you and say, here is your date, that you will have the option to pick either a virtual or an in-person. And like I said, if, if the appeal gets into that time period where they're traveling, that it's possible that they may come down here and go down to Grand County and perform, uh, several of those appeals onsite down there.
Great. Thank you, Josh. For, uh, yeah, go ahead, Bill.
Um, is just wanna make sure I understand correctly. Clearly, I'm learning as we go a little bit with this here also. But you said that the appeal is submitted through the auditor?
Yes, the county auditor is, they have the paperwork and on their, when they send out the decision, there should be, um, information on there. I'm not exactly sure what Grand County's information says of, here are your appeal rights, you have thirty days. Um, whether it says to come into our office or contact the Grand County Auditor. Um, it should state something to that effect so the taxpayer knows that they need to come back into the Grand County Auditor's office and file that paperwork. And then the auditor will then submit that information electronically um, through a website up to the State Task Commission.
Okay, and then clearly because there's been so much public controversy over this, at least myself and I believe others also are struggling with the fact that we are approving something that we may not totally be in agreement with here when we approve the the hearing officer that we hired. So we're basically giving our approval to his determination is what this, this process will be, which then allows them to appeal to you, correct?
Yes, and I, and I applaud those that have appealed because the, the main issue that I'm seeing right now, the main, uh, the, the majority of phone calls that I'm receiving and emails is from taxpayers that did not appeal and are looking at their tax bill and wanting to do something now and their, uh, the dates have passed and the appeal rights have been exhausted at that point. So, um, those that have appealed and those that you are trying to, uh, make a decision on, that process is still in place for those taxpayers. And I encourage them that if they disagree with the decision that is being made, that they do appeal and that they ma- maintain those appeal rights by doing so within the thirty days after they receive that letter.
Right, and I guess the point I was trying to make, I struggle with approving something that I'm not quite sure is where it should be, which then allows them to appeal to the state. It's kind of a, I, I'm giving it a rubber stamp is what it feels like so that then it can go to your office. And I understand that, but I struggle with it a little bit.
Yeah, and I, I think that's the crux of it for, for most of us for sure. And I feel like it's, um, we're not approving, we're just moving the process along more or less. It's, um, yeah.
And, and if, if I don't mind saying, and maybe I'm off base in saying this, um, because I think this applies for my job as well, um, that you as the board have to ratify or rubber, rubber stamp, whatever you wanna call it, or approve several decisions throughout the year. And you guys rely on experts to provide you recommendations when you do that, whether, you know, in, in strictly in property tax processes you're talking about, whether or not you're dealing with green belt or primary residential or tax relief exemptions. Um, and all these things that you're relying on different people to provide you those recommendations on, based on their knowledge and expertise to do that. Um, I know that I can't be an expert in all fields of all the people I manage and I rely heavily on my managers to, to provide me the proper information for me to make decisions. And I do understand that the buck stops with me though, because I'm the one that made the decision, but I rely heavily on their information to, to do so. So I think that that is something that you guys have to consider is that you hired a hearing officer who is impartial to hear these appeals. And, um, just like the hearing officer, our commission is going to have to make a decision based on the evidence presented. So although you may disagree or not be sure about the decision or the recommendation that the hearing officer presented, he or she hopefully made the decision based on the evidence that was presented to them. And, um, the way our current law reads is that in most cases, when a taxpayer appeals, that the burden of proof falls on them. So if they are unable to meet that burden of proof, then the hearing officer or the commission or the judge is required to vote in favor of, um, the county in that, in, in your case. Or, you know, not, not for the taxpayer because they did not meet that burden of proof.
And so when they appeal, when they come before you, will the appraiser be part of those appeals that made the original determination on these properties?
That I can't definitively say because that is, um, your county's call and that's probably something that should have been negotiated with the contract when hiring the commercial appraiser is that you, um, I think most counties have something in the contract that states that you will come and value the properties and defend any that are appealed or there might be like an additional fee like that was contracted with, any appeal that we have to defend, there'll be this additional fee. So I don't know what's in your contract. And that's a county decision that you would have to make on, uh, defending those appeals.
Would you know if that's in the contract, Debbie? It is in the contract. Okay.
That's all I had. Thank you, Josh.
Um, I, I had a couple of questions and, and they're a little bit different. Um, so, uh, you know, so some of the pro- properties that have been discussed are um, condominiums in a development where you had to have a lot of nearly identical pieces of property and they're of course all assessed similarly initially. Um, maybe some people appeal and I think some, some of those appeals are at least partially successful. Um, I, you're just looking at the, the beginning of, you know, title fifty nine to ten about the Board of Equalization. It, you know, says in multiple places, our job is to equalize property values. And I'm just wondering how that, you know, if we have a bunch of condos here that are assessed at five hundred thousand dollars after a successful appeal and we have identical ones that are assessed at six hundred thousand dollars, you know, that didn't use to appeal. Um, are we like ob- obligated to equalize as the Board of Equalization or what? How is that typically handled?
Um, are you obligated? Not necessarily, although your job, like you said, is to make sure that things are fair and equitable. Um, this is very difficult in the, in a mass appraisal system, right? Because the assessor's office is trying to, um, do everything in a mass adjustment. And so things fall through the cracks, things happen, um, adjustments may be made that, um, require, and that's why we have the appeal process is that you want that there so that those properties that are, you know, dead, if the assessor's office had the ability to go out and do a fee appraiser on every, appraisal on every single property, there would probably be a lot less errors. There'd be a lot less appeals. Um, when you do it in mass, you're going to have properties that probably are above a hundred percent of what they, you know, where they should be. And that's why you have the process. Now regarding your question on should you, um, that is a decision that would need to be made based on the facts of the appeal and the decision that was rendered. Does the reason why the the parcel or, um, value of that property was lowered have the same issues in all the other properties? Is, is it identical? Does the reason why, um, the hearing officer made the recommendation to lower the value apply to all the other properties? If so, then you guys do have the option to look at that and say, okay, let's work with our assessor's office and determine whether or not that was something that was overlooked and whether or not we want to equalize tho- equalize those across the board. You do have that option.
Okay, thanks. And then I, I guess a related question, you know, most of what we've been discussing has been within this appeals process, but, but again, my reading, and I think you just confirmed some of it is that, you know, we're, we're not limited. If, when we change the assessment of our property, we're not limited to people who appealed. We can, you know, in towards the goal of equalizing. And, and I guess, uh, a part of the question is that, can we do that anytime of the year or, um, or I didn't notice any deadlines or timeframes in the code.
Yeah, I would think that, I mean, normally the Board of Equalization time period for the most part is that September fifteenth to November fifteenth time period. Uh, there is other times throughout the year where you need to open up the board to make a few decisions. Um, obviously you wouldn't want to do it year round. Uh, you would wanna wait until, um, after the role is closed by the assessor's office on May twenty second. And after that is done, there is, and I think the assessor will, um, tell you that she's done this before, is that we do make adjustments in June and July that should be ratified by the, the board. Uh, assessor initiated adjustments when, uh, they recognize that, uh, oh, I need to fix this, I need to fix this. They're, they're doing some checks and those are fixed. So those are fixed through an assessor initiated adjustment. Um, when the appeal process happens and at this point, um, there is a, a rule that allows taxpayers to have their property value changed and appealed. Um, after the time period of September fifteenth, if a factual error is found and it provides in that rule the definition for a factual error. And that is based upon that the assessor and the taxpayer agree that a factual error was made. So going back to your situation with the condos, that if in the appeal, it was brought forward that, uh, there was a piece of evidence that uh, maybe the assessor's office was unaware of that's lowered the value and that that same piece of evidence applies to the other places and that it's, you know, it's a factual thing that was missed and can be, you know, adjusted, then yeah, you go back and, and fix that. Um, that rule states that those changes can be made up until the time period in which the treasurer closes out the final settlement, which is the end of March.
Okay, so then if I'm, if I'm understanding you correctly, um, if we, if that, you know, equalization for the, the parcels that did not appeal, if it doesn't happen in the short term around now, there's another window around May or, you know, when it would be convenient and appropriate to do that?
Thing, you know, if you guys decide to approve, in essence, the board, if you go through with the approval of the hearing officers' decisions here today or whenever you do do that, at that point, in essence, what you're saying is you are approving those decisions. And so to some extent, to go back on those, those specific properties, I think would not be right. Now, if somebody comes forward to you between now and March thirty first of next year for the twenty twenty three tax year and is able to work with the assessor and they both agree that a factual error has taken place, then yes, an adjustment can be made for those.
Yeah, I guess the, the scenario I was talking about was a little bit different. Let's, let's suppose we approve what the hearing officer recommends. And those recommendations were, uh, you know, sort of a downward adjustment of the assessment for half the condos in a development. You know, it, when, if ever, should we look at the other half, the people who didn't appeal and do something similar? Is it like, do we never do that? Do we do it immediately? Do we wait until May?
Um, it would be something that you just wanna look at immediately and, and, and work with the assessor to understand that. Um, whether or not that it, it is, you know, an, uh, something that is overlooked, whether or not there is an equity issue there that needs to be addressed that is significant. Um, that, that's a tough call because the process is ongoing yearly and even though the assessor's office is kind of closed up twenty twenty, they're already working on twenty twenty four and they're trying to move forward with that. And because we work in this mass appraisal system, I wish we could say it was all perfect. I wish we could say every parcel was out there right. Um, at some point you have to stop the process and move forward, but if, if it in the appeal or if there was something that was lowered that brings to your attention that something wasn't right or equitable and you as the board decide you want to fix that, you have the authority to do so.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Josh.
And, and not, not to, I guess, one point of, of something that I wanna mention is, uh, not that we would, I'm not trying to like, say we would do this, but we have had to do this in other counties where um, the Tax Commission has that authority as well. So if we feel that, um, the, the assessor's office or the Board of Equalization is not, does not have properties at a fair and equitable rate and it comes to our attention that there's certain, uh, certain properties and usually it has to be egregious for us to step in and do that. We don't step in and do it for, um, just anything, but if, if, if a decision was made that we felt was clearly not either equitable or even close to fair market value, we have the authority as well to step in and, um, order a change.
Great, thank you, Josh. It's interesting. Um, the, uh, any further questions for Joshua who's on here? Do, do you? No. Stephen? All right, um, yeah.
Do you mind, do you mind if I make one last remark?
No, no, please do, Josh.
Um, although your situation because of the commercial, uh, side of it is unique to your county. Um, it is, you know, a definitely a unique situation that you guys are finding yourselves in. We are finding these unique situations happening, um, in several of the other counties over the last couple of years. Um, COVID and the market that we've seen has caused a lot of very, um, difficult situations that counties have had to deal with. Um, it's put a lot of stress on taxpayers. We've seen our market increase at an unprecedented rate that, um, probably none of us have ever really seen. that, um, probably none of us have ever really seen before. Uh, property values are increasing drastically and there's been a lot of tax shifts between commercial to residential, residential to commercial. And I do feel for the tax, you know, I'm a taxpayer myself. Uh, I don't like it. I don't like to see my property increase drastically. So if your value is not a fair ma- market value, please, please appeal. I encourage you to appeal, um. If you're upset with your taxes, that's probably a different matter and trying to understand the process. Um, and we are currently working with all the assessors across the state, um, because of these drastic changes. It did show us where our weaknesses were and it showed us where we can do better at our jobs. And we're working in all the offices across the state to help them, uh, have the data they need to save the market value so that we're not seeing drastic increases. Um, you know, if we wait three or four years to value our property instead of, uh, instead of applying adjustments every year that will keep the value slowly increasing based on the fair market or decreasing whatever that the market is doing. So, um, I just want everyone to know that it, this, this isn't unique to your county as far as the frustrations of um, dealing with the market, the way that we're seeing it now and dealing with tax shifts and the frustrations of taxpayers seeing large changes to their value and their taxes in one year. It is frustrating and uh, but it's also understandable and unfortunately that's the market that we're, we're living in right now.
Great, yeah. Thank you. I appreciate that. All right, um, yeah, thank you again so much, Josh, for being here. It's, it's, it's very helpful and, um, I, I, yeah, we all, we all appreciate it. So thank you.
Well, I mean, if any of you have any questions, you're happy, feel free to reach out to me. I'm happy to, to work with you and speak with you.
Great, we will, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for talking.
All right, um, so we're on to our action item, uh, discussion and consideration of approval, and that is the, uh, action item from Tuesday night. Uh, approval of Board of Equalization Hearing Officer Recommendations. And, um, yeah, I'll just open the floor up. Um, it's, it's only been a couple of days. I think where we left it the other day is, is we, I think we all feel like we're a bit between a rock and a hard place. Um, I think Bill said it really well, y- you know, we, we see these things that have been put before us and it's hard to look at them and, and give them an approval and at the same time, within the system, it, it doesn't feel like there's, um, a lot that, uh, it, it feels like it, it's, it's daunting to, to put myself in a place where I'm kind of assuming the role of an expert or, or, um, you know, an appraiser or, or whatever and, and looking at these and in, in a timely manner and and judging them. So, um, we were giving ourselves a little bit more time to look for a potential third way. Um, I've definitely spent whatever time I could the last two days, which has been not a ton because I also am a working man and, uh, and, and, and trying to further educate myself and, and work it out and, and here we are. And I, I think where I'm at right now is, is probably, um, uh, approving the hearing officer's recommendations, even though I'm not sure I agree with all of them and, and letting the folks at the state, uh, take that next step. And I, after listening to Josh and talking to other people, I'm uh, hopeful that they are able to look at those and, and, um, make some good decisions about, about where they lie on that. Floor's open. Kevin?
I was seeing if Bill wanted to go first. Um, yeah, no, I, I, I think I, I share some of these sentiments that Bill expressed earlier, the frustration I agree with what you said, Jacques. It, it, it was a kind of you know, it kind of, you know, stuck in my craw to, you know, be asked to sign off on something where I heard a lot of, you know, credible, you know, criticisms of, we didn't get to hear the other side, which I think is part of the problem of, of this, of the structure. Um, but I do think, you know, a lot of people made this point and I'll, I'll make it as well as that, you know, we're not equipped to, um, you know, make these technical determinations and especially not, you know, to do it, you know, sixty different times or however many properties is on that list. That's, that's, it's not practical. So it, it, it is difficult. Um, I I, yeah, I think one thing I want to focus on, when we make an analogy to elections, you know, it's not enough as local government to like run a fair election where all the votes are ca- calculated accurately and there are all the candidates are treated fairly. We also need to make sure that, that everybody knows that, you know, things are counted accurately. So the, you know, the perception is almost as important as the reality. And so we put a lot of effort into not just running the elections fairly, but giving opportunities for the public to come in and see that. Um, I, I think, you know, we need to take a step in that direction when it comes to assessments as well. I think, you know, that if even county commissioners can't really say, you know, why, you know, if, if we can't defend these assessments, then, you know, general member of the public, you know, what, what are they supposed to think? So I, I think there, I know, I know there's sometimes, you know, confidential information, but I, I think if, you know, the next time we have a contract, if we could get the hearing officer to just say, you know, these were like three different types of issues that were raised. And, you know, and, you know, twenty-five percent of the cases I agreed with the appellant for these reasons, seventy-five percent, you know, I disagreed and here is I think that would be super helpful and, um, and we, I don't think we've had much of that at all this year and maybe in the, and, and in the past, you know, it just hasn't been controversial. We haven't bothered, you know, it's just kind of
Right.
been on one course and suddenly we're realizing that's not tenable anymore. So I, I'm not, I'm not blaming anybody for setting things up this year. We just have been doing it the way we have been doing it, but I think it's now clear in the future, we should do it a little bit differently. And I think, um, Chris Kaufman sets a good example with his treasure reports and you know, the tax abatements and stuff like that. He, you know, pretty much any question I wanted to ask Chris is already answered in the, um, in the packet materials that he submits, so that maybe we could do something along those lines. Um, I had a couple of other things to say, but I'll pause, just give someone else a chance.
About what policy?
Oh, he said he was gonna pause and give.
I didn't want to drone on for too long, so I'm gonna stop.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Yeah, I'll take a little stab at it. I mean, this might be an opportunity to look at the fact as commissioners that we should be better educated on this issue. Um, it might even be worth mentioning that maybe a full-time commission body rather than a part-time would be doing a better job for our citizens. Rather than the fact that we do all have other jobs, there's, um, there's a need, whether we are full-time or part-time, I think, to better understand this. And I think that we have experts in the community that could be put together and possibly work with the hearing officer. Um, I, I know we have a realtor president and that isn't even the one that I'm thinking of, but there are leaders in this community that are actual brokers that probably have a better idea than any of us as to what the true values are, especially of commercial that's sold. And so I, I, I struggle with just giving up and not being better educated myself and truly, I, I think that there's a, a need to do a better job here and to to look at what the hearing officer and the appraiser is doing and have a, a, a little bit more of a critical eye on what's going on there rather than, as Josh just told us, we did hire them, but you know, I hire a plumber and I expect the drain to be unplugged when he's done. So we're gonna oversee that and I, I just think that there's a little bit of responsibility on our shoulders here to go away and become better educated on this. Uh, that's my initial thoughts on it.
Um, yeah, s- something else I wanted to say is I, you know, we've gotten a lot of advice to, you know, just don't, don't touch the hearing officer's opinions, you know, you have to be an ex, I, you know, I always, um, you know, react against, you know, this notion, respect as for experts in all classes. Like, you know, if a doctor tells me something, I, I'm very skeptical and, you know, he's got to convince me he's right. Um, medical degree or not. Um, so un- unlike a lot of people, I, I probably would have been willing for us to do the unprecedented thing and, you know, start meddling with these assessed values, but, but I think to do that, there would have to be very strong evidence that things were out of whack and you know, two days isn't a lot of time, but I did, you know, I, I asked Chris Kaufman for a list of all the assessments in the county. And I pulled all the ones for nightly rentals and, you know, you see how different, you know, how Entrada versus Moab Springs Ranch versus um, the Gonzo Inn and all those things. And, um, they, they all seem pretty comparable to me. I mean, you know, to, I, I didn't see any big gaping holes. If, if I had, I, I might be making a different spiel right now. So I, I think, I'm, I'm not, I, I'm not saying that the the assessments that we're checking off on are, are perfect, but I, you know, I I've, I've, I've looked and I, I can't find evidence that there's, there's huge problems. And, and so I think if there is a problem, it's something that requires more expertise to tease out and that's something that's probably better done at the next stage of the process. So, um, but I, I, I guess I just want, I'm not, I'm not addressing all the complaints that have, you know, all the very detailed, um, critiques of the assessments that have been sent to us, but I you know, I've looked into as, as many of, as I can, so.
Very.
It seems like oftentimes we're asked to put on types of hats as commissioners. That it's like this part of this process that like we have this ability to really do something. And I find this prospect, process very frustrating because when you look at what we could do if we chose to not accept this would be I mean, it, it would is the, the work, the time, the expertise, the everything involved. I think is would be beyond even people who were full-time commissioners. I mean, this would be an incre- uh, almost an untenable thing to take on. And so I find it, not that it can be changed, but I find it frustrating when we're giving these hats that uh, say that we have the ability to do something. Which in many ways we don't. I mean, it's, it's not doable. When you, when I spent some time and looked at what it would take for us to not accept it and go through that process. If, if we would probably end up making a bigger mess in the long run, then, then it's already a mess. So this is not saying anything about other than this, this, I find this process, uh, frustrating. And, uh, it's hard to be put in a position where it appears as though you have some control over something that on so many levels would be very we don't. And, uh, with that said, I'm going to make a motion to move to approve the proposed Board of Equalization Hearing Officer Recommendation reserving from the taxpayers' valuation appearing during the two thousand and twenty-three BOE.
Okay, oh, I'll second that.
It's like so many times you are put in a position that you don't really like the position you've been put in and you don't but you don't see any alternative. And that's where I'm at. I mean, I think we can improve it and we can look at it next year. I think this and that, but it is it's complicated.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike. Rock and a hard place is an understatement. I am not an expert in tax evaluation or property evaluation, but with credible evidence, uh, that has been presented to us, it's very hard to deny or to deny, uh, appeals at the evaluations. Uh, it would be better had we had a little more contact with our, with the evaluator or the appraiser. It would give me a clearer picture in which way I was to go. I, I have a hard time hoping, uh, to send this further. When I want here to take action, uh, but again, I'm not an expert in this field.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'd add that, that I think this experience, like Kevin said, um, we just haven't had an experience like this in the past and I think we just kind of took the process for granted and, and things happened and we, we did, uh, you know, we convened once a year and we, we approved the, um, the hearings in the past and then sent them on to state without giving it a ton of thought because nobody brought up anything, at least since I've been on the commission. But I do think that after having this experience this year, it's definitely worth, um, I, I think it's worth further discussions. We should, we should set at least a discussion item soon and, and talk about ways that we can get involved in the process, improve the process. I think Kevin's suggestion was great that we get a little more, um, information, uh, going into future, uh, BOE concerns for sure. So this is, this has definitely been an eye-opening experience, I think, for all of us.
I, I definitely feel that we've, we have got to put the pressure on and expect better and more from the people that we're hiring.
All right, any other, uh, discussion before calling for a vote?
Kate?
Yes, if I can just say, um, I'll expect that we will be able to send out the determination letters early next week, Monday or Tuesday. Um, and I did relay an appeal to the State Tax Commission. It was only one, but I, it's, so it's not entirely new to my office and we will be prepared to do so and, um, do everything we can to help anyone, any of these appellants, um, forward their case to the state.
Thank you, Kate. Yeah, Stephen.
And just for clarification, the full list of the, um, individuals that individual taxpayers or entities have been listed, including the ones that I believe there are four more that were added.
That's correct.
Okay, just want to make sure.
And, and also to be clear, if, if, if we weren't to approve these appeals, then I think, I mean, you know, some of, some of these appeals are partially successful, so I, I assume it's kind of reverts back to the higher evaluations. And, but then it maybe comes with the county commission and a couple of, you know, like, we're not escaping the problem if we vote no on this. It just, you know, comes back to us again.
Right, right. That's, that's, that's correct. Yeah. All right, anything else before calling for a vote? All right, so the motion was made by, uh, Commissioner McGann to approve, uh, the Hearing Officer's Recommendations, Board of Equalization Hearing Officer's Recommendations, seconded by Commissioner Walker. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And the motion passes unanimously. Um, thanks, you guys. This is, I, I just want to say too, this has literally been one of the very hardest things that I've, that I've done on the commission. I don't feel good about it. It's it's something that we do and it's been, it's been a big learning experience. It's been, um, eye-opening and, uh, I think we'll move on and, and hopefully do a and, you know, at least a, a different job or, or have this experience inform our future experiences.
Yeah, actually, one other thing I, I meant to say earlier is, um, you know, we, we, we received a pretty big variety of, of complaints and I'm, I'm resisting the temptation to, like, address a, a lot of them, but the sum of it was just, you know, I don't know how I can pay the tax bill this year. And I just wanted to note that Grand County, you know, the treasurer's office does have various ways to make it you know, let people defer paying taxes and to, and, you know, sort of lessen the, the blow there. Um, so that's, you know, if I just want to make sure that taxpayers are aware of that.
Yeah.
I wonder if we'd want to put something on our website or get it in the paper to let people know, uh, what is available to help with the tax burden, because there are Christopher and Christopher Kaufman's been very good at helping people.
Right. Do we, do we know, number one, the length of term of the contract for the hearing officer and then how frequently we, we reach out and do that contract?
Three, five years.
Three, five years.
However, he just picked up, um, our, and he will do multiple resumees. From the hearing officer?
Yes.
I asked him if he had a new contract. He hasn't signed a contract in the last couple of years. He has received one. I believe the last time was Diana's.
Okay, so just, just re-stating that, if anybody couldn't hear, that the hearing officer currently, uh, hasn't set a contract for some time and that's been since Ms. Carol was here? Okay.
Yeah, Mike. I'd like to add that to the future discussion item. We work at all haste, uh, towards a yearly evaluation.
Great. All right, um, I will adjourn this special, uh, meeting of the Board of Equalization at four fifty-one. And thank you, guys. Yeah. Very much.